I am calling this meeting of the town of Silver City Council to order. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda requiring action is proclamations. And since October 16th through the 22nd, 2016, is Fire Prevention Week, the town would like to recognize this with a proclamation. Would Fire Marshal Lambert please come forward to receive the proclamation?
Whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas, U.S. Fire Department responded to 369,500 home fires in 2014, according to the National Fire Prevention Protection Association. And U.S. home fires resulted in 2,745 civilian deaths in 2014, representing the majority, 84 percent, of all U.S. fire deaths. And whereas, in one-fifth of all homes with smoke alarms, the smoke alarms are not working, and three out of five home fire deaths result from fires in properties without smoke alarms, 38 percent, or with no working smoke alarm, 21 percent. And whereas, working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And whereas, many Americans don't know how old the smoke alarm in their homes are, or how often they need to be replaced. And whereas, all smoke alarms should be replaced at least once every 10 years. And whereas, the age of a smoke alarm can be determined by the date of its manufacturer, which is marked on the back of the smoke alarm. And whereas, the Silver City firefighters are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas, Silver City's residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas, the 2016 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Don't wait, check the date," replace smoke alarms every 10 years, effectively serves to educate the public about the vital importance of replacing the smoke alarm in their homes at least every 10 years, and to determine the age of their smoke alarm by checking the date of manufacture on the back of the alarm. Now therefore, I Ken Ladner, Mayor of the Town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, in view of the inherent value of this, do hereby proclaim, October 16th through 22nd, 2016, as Fire Prevention Week, and urge all of the people of Silver City to find out how old the smoke alarms in their homes are, to replace them if they are more than 10 years old, and to participate in the many public safety activity and efforts of the Silver City Fire Department during Fire Prevention Week 2016.
Would you like to say a few words?
Certainly. In honor of this proclamation and Fire Prevention Week being October 16th through the 22nd, the Silver City Fire Department will be hosting all of the public schools and their classes at our stations for tours and fire safety presentations. We're also planning on some public speaking events, and we just wanted to thank the mayor and the council for this proclamation.
Thank you, Marshal Lambert. The next item on the agenda is public input, and we have three people that have signed up. And whenever it's your turn, please come to the podium, make sure you push that little white button, identify yourself, and remember that you have about five minutes. First on the list is Dr. Mark Donnell.
My name is Dr. Mark Donnell. I'm Chief of Anesthesia and Assistant Medical Director for the Emergency Medical Services of Hila Regional Medical Center. Mayor Ladner, members of the town council, I am here again to speak with you regarding the impaired driving incident involving Grant County District Attorney Francesca Martinez Estevas. As you recall, she was stopped by officers of the Silver City Police Department on June 11th, 2016, after two 911 calls by another driver who observed her to be driving her vehicle in a very dangerous manner. In my opinion, the dash cam video from his car and from the lapel cameras of the officers who made the stop clearly show Mrs. Martinez Estevas to have been severely impaired. This video is still available at krqe.com or by Googling "District Attorney, Grant County, New Mexico." I urge everyone to view the video, listen to the 911 calls, and read the officer's statements to make up your own minds regarding her condition. It seems like she was able to avoid arrest solely because of her position as district attorney. I've been in contact with Senator Howie Morales, who also has strong feelings about this issue, and I will be enlisting his help in arranging a community town hall type of meeting to organize further activities to encourage Ms. Martinez Estevas to resign and/or to defeat her bid for reelection in November. Because she is running unopposed, she is clearly hoping that public apathy will result in her reelection. In my opinion, her episode of impaired driving makes her unfit for the job of district attorney. We need public support and outcry to remove Ms. Martinez Estevas from her public office. Because the failure to arrest was an error by members of the Silver City Police Department, the town council has more than a passing interest in this case. I realize that it's difficult for council members to take a stand on an issue like this, but we really need to have the involvement of our community leaders. This is not a political issue. It's about doing the right thing because it's the right thing to do. I am therefore again asking the town council to consider passing a resolution of no confidence in District Attorney Martinez Estevas. I also understand that it may be difficult for the council to take a position as the council, and I would ask that you consider becoming involved as an individual in some of the activities that we will be sponsoring in the near future in the community. You may also wish to speak with your acquaintances to urge a no vote on the reelection of the district attorney. Please do not allow apathy to let this important issue go uncorrected. Thank you.
Next on the list is Mr. Larry McLeod.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Larry McLeod. I live here in Silver City. I've been concerned about the noise issue in town. Some of you may recall that I first came to the town council meeting in May of 2013. I came back five more times to talk about the concerns we had. I circulated a petition that over 200 people signed, asking that the town enforce the laws on the books. I made a video that was shown on Katz FM about one violator who, not only was he extremely loud, but he also broke the speed limit, and he also went the wrong way on a one-way street. It's all in the video. If you'd like to see it, I'd be happy to show it to you. My concern with the ATV issue deals with a number of issues, but the noise issue is certainly one of them. I went to the court and asked for information about how many citations were given for the noise issue. And between January 1st, 2012, to October 30th, 2013, that's 22 months worth of data, there were 42 citations issued under the noise ordinance. I did it again, between October 30th, 2013, to June 3rd, 2014, that's about six months, and there were 49 citations that were issued. I went back to the court today and asked to get a reading of how many citations were given in the year 2015, for 12 months, for the full year. And there's a grand total of three. So what I am saying is that the noise ordinance is not being enforced. I think it's pretty clear that that's in fact the case. If people don't believe me, then I would invite them to come and sit on my front porch on a Friday or Saturday and listen to and watch the vehicles go by and see what you think. I believe that there are more than three violations per day around my house. So noise is a real concern, and there's no enforcement of the ordinance that I can tell. At least it's been very spotty. So when it comes to the ATV issue, I think there are three main issues that I'm very concerned about. One is noise and the enforcement of the ordinance. Apparently, the police department doesn't have the...
You have a one minute left.
Okay, thank you. The noise is a big concern. The decibel level of 96 is over 50 percent higher than the decibel limit is for cars and trucks in town. So that's a major issue. The other issue is speed. There's a lot of speeding going on in town, particularly by my house, but also in other places in town. That's a major problem. And of course, the last issue is safety. There are a lot of problems with ATVs on paved roads. There's lots of information out there identifying this as a major problem. So for those reasons, I urge you, please, do not pass this ATV in Silver City ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Suzie Sedentop.
My name is Suzie Sedentop, and I'd like to thank the councilors and the mayor for their service. I'd like to comment on two issues. Do the ATVs allowed on Silver City streets or running adjacent to it? Does that mean they're riding in the bike lane or in the ditch? Either way, it sounds like a major safety issue. I do not believe we need them in town. Out in Cliff and Hila and PA is another story, and a county issue, not a Silver City issue. I don't believe you should spend one more minute on this idea. The second thing I'd like to speak to is I want to thank Counselor Bedison and Counselor Ray for initiating the amendment to the breeding of dogs in the city limit. These animals are not companion animals. They are a commodity and treated as such. If you have any questions or doubts, please see the January 2016 video that Officer Bascom made of a local breeder with 25 dogs. Twenty of them were puppies who were born outside in the snow, in the mud, with no regular food at hand, and their water was frozen. These 25 animals were on a city lot of approximately 75 feet by 120 feet. Our police and ACO are overworked already, and we need less things to enforce, not more. Please do the right thing for the animals with no voice and pass the non-breeding issue. I would like to offer my services to stamp envelopes and letters notifying the breeders as soon as possible. Maybe we can stop another litter. I do not believe our single ACO has the time to do this type of work. Thank you very much, and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is council comments. Before council comments, I'd like to make several announcements. I would like to begin with a special announcement. Alex Brown, our town manager and financial director, is not present with us tonight because he is accepting a very prestigious award. He has been awarded the New Mexico Association of Energy Engineers Energy Manager of the Year Award because his accomplishments on the solar array at the town's wastewater treatment plant and the Radio Reed Water Meter project for significant achievements and showed his commitment to saving energy and money for the town. This is an outstanding accomplishment for Alex and recognition for the town of Silver City, so we want to congratulate him on this award. Second, I would like to mention that we feel strongly about Alex's competence as our town manager. In fact, Alex was recently nominated for the New Mexico Municipal League's City Manager of the Year Award. To our regret, a manager from another city was chosen, but I want to take this opportunity to thank everyone, and there were many, that sent in letters of support for his nomination. We all know what an asset he is to our community, and I am acknowledging that now. I also want to thank Ann Mackey, our town clerk, for representing the town of Silver City and the New Mexico Municipal Clerks and Finance Offices Association, as she served as president of the Clerks Association and as a director on the New Mexico Municipal League's Board of Directors from 2015 through 2016. Ann will continue to serve as past president of the Clerks Association for another year, beginning October 1st. Several more. A couple of Fridays ago, I attended the mayor's summit in Albuquerque and had an opportunity to work with Mayor Berry and mayors from all over the state. And for the council, I'll put together a little report and give that to you in the near future. Next Thursday, October 6th, I will be attending the meeting of the Department of Transportation in Albuquerque to present our formal request to name the newly reconstructed Hudson Street Bridge located on Highway 90 as, quote, "The Veterans Memorial Bridge," end quote. I'd also like to announce that this Thursday, September 29th, LifeQuest will be having a ribbon cutting for their new park and the People's Park and the Youth mural, and encourage all to attend to that. One last announcement. We always looking for ways to work together in the community. Hopefully, we'll soon be having a streaming live video from W-Mountain, and that will be a result of the town of Silver City, Western New Mexico University, and the county working together to make this happen. So it's really good to see when community groups work together to get some good things done. Now let's go to council comments. Counselor Ayman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have actually had just a brief comment, which is that the comprehensive plan, community input meetings, will be starting up again, and these will be meetings about the specific sections of the plans, so they follow up on the district meetings. The land use and community design will be on October 4th at 6:00 p.m. in this room, and that will be kind of an extension of the regular planning and zoning. On October 6th at 6:00 p.m. in the annex upstairs will be a meeting on transportation. Housing will be October 11th at 6:00 p.m. The one that, in my district, had the most votes, Public Facilities and Services, will be on October 13th at 6:00 p.m. in the annex upstairs conference room. And then one that I'm always eager about, Economic Development, will be on October 18th at 6:00 p.m. in the annex upstairs conference room. And then the last one of this sort, more will be coming, will be Natural Resources on October 20th at 6:00 p.m. in the annex upstairs conference room. I really encourage community members to attend, and we'll make sure. I know that the Community Development Department is going to publicize these dates and meetings widely. I really encourage you to get them on your calendar and attend. It's an opportunity for your voice for our future.
Counselor Bedison?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to reiterate what Counselor Ayman Smith said. It's an opportunity for you to give us your voice in the comprehensive plan, so if you're interested in one or more of those different subsections of the plan, please, please do attend and let the Community Development Department know that you're interested in helping with the work group for whichever one you may be interested in. I'd also like to mention that I'm looking forward to my first meeting as the New Mexico Municipal League Treasurer. The first board meeting's coming up here on Saturday, and I look forward to serving in this position. And I just want to thank again the council for their support for my election. And I do know that there's a water conference here. Is it next week? And I don't know if anyone has the dates.
Yes, it's Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday.
And at Western?
Yeah.
Yeah. And so that's an annual conference, but it's being held here?
Yes, it's a big state deal, and we're really fortunate that they're meeting here.
So if you're interested about looking at that, I think it's available on what's coming up, sorts of things on the different sorts of calendars that are about. And I know that WMU Outdoors Program has sent out information about it, so you can always contact them if you want more information about what's going to be presented. And since it's a statewide meeting, I would hope that it would be available on one of our web, one of the agency websites. But unfortunately, I'm not sure which one, except for it's got to be under maybe ISC or under Waters somehow. I'm just not really sure what to look up. But I do know that it's occurring. Thank you, Mayor, for reminding us of when it's going to be held.
Counselor Condon?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to follow up. It's always nice to see community members doing big things, and I just wanted to give my congratulations to Ben Fisher, who recently won two awards from the Mexico Press Association for his reporting. Ben is the one who covers our beat, so congratulations, Ben. Thank you.
Counselor Ray?
I'm on it.
Does the council have any additional comments? Okay. Next is changes to the agenda. Does the council want to make any changes to the agenda?
What's it?
Okay, no changes. Next item, seven, is approval of minutes of the September 13, 2016 regular meeting. Do I hear a motion? Counselor Ayman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to approve the minutes of the regular town council meeting of September 13, 2016.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, a second motion is stated.
Counselor Bedison? Is there any discussion? Provinced aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries? The next item on the agenda is reports. Since Mr. Brown is out of town, Mr. Marshall will be making the report, I think.
Thank you, Mayor Condon. September 14th and 15th, I attended the Revenue Stabilization and Tax Policy Committee, and as you're well aware of, it has quite the significance at this point of time. Hold on. I'm going to change microphone so I can see. Maybe. So I want to give you a little bit of a summary of the meeting. It was a two-day meeting. This is the packet that was handed out at the meeting, so I don't think you want me to go into detail over that. But I think it's really important to get a little bit of background. Some of the presentations were very basic, the history of taxes in New Mexico, from grocery receipts to property tax, as well as the history of how they came about being distributed. It's really, really critical, and if you look at the Mexico Tax Research Institute, you'll see the characteristics of a comprehensive and good tax, and I'm going to list some of those. There's several different models and different language and variances of this language, but the first one being that the tax has to be adequate. Obviously, it needs to provide appropriate funding for services that are best provided by the public sector. Do the least harm to the private economy. Broad-based, decrease rates. Fair and equitable, taxing the same for the same. Not costly to administer. In brief, that's easily understood to minimize the compliance costs. Evaluated based on the impact of all taxes levied on given taxpayer, which is very, very critical, and you see and you hear that discussion in this council and from Mr. Brown often, is how we decide whether it's a property tax issue, if it's a grocery seat issue. It's taking a comprehensive look at the tax and the impact of all the taxes on the payer. And then the deviations have to be well reasoned, and this is a little shocker that a senator in the state uses these guidelines a lot, but it needs to be measurable. And not all of our credits and exemptions are measurable or even reported. So basically, there's property tax, sales tax, personal income tax, excise, and corporate tax. Each one has differing characters, characteristics, and impacts on the payer. Some of the problems, as we're well aware of with the whole harmless, the 3/8 percent that was authorized by the legislature for local governments to impose, for some that created a windfall, for some that created a deficit. And it was very, very interesting to listen to him discuss that. And probably, I don't know if it's an admission of guilt or what, but they took the gross number of taxes, grocery receipts taxes across the state, and they figured that 3/8 of 1% would cover the tax that that creates. So that works well when you apply it at the state level across everybody if the state was the single recipient. It does not work, and they acknowledge it does not work, when you apply it to all of the different jurisdictions in the state, county, city, as well as the state. So there's a problem. This committee spent two days basically identifying the problems and trying to address some potential solutions. The GRT, which currently New Mexico uses and not many other states actually use a grocery receipts tax versus a sales tax. The GRT is a, creates pyramid-ing, it's a regressive tax, and it is very prime for the exemptions and credits versus a retail sales tax. The property tax, a few years ago, it was identified that there was a tax lightening issue where you'd have big spikes in your property tax, which people couldn't afford that were on fixed income. So they put in a 3% cap. So the problem creates today, we're in about a budget deficit, and the 3% is not meeting the deficit, and it's also leaving money on the table. So there's many jurisdictions where the true and accurate value of the property far exceeds the taxed value because people have bumped up against that 3% every year. The distribution needs to be in a... The distribution needs to be in a manner that is adequate and of most stability. So if you were to take, and if you look through the packet, you'll see on their website for that committee, if you go to the committee on the legislative website, you'll see that there's a, there's a screenshot of a model that they're, they're playing with, that you can insert the taxes by jurisdiction. You can actually select municipality or county, use their grocery seat tax. And then you can click on the different taxes that are out there. If you were to include motor vehicle excise tax, which we currently don't receive at municipal level, so let's say we're going to receive some of it at municipal level, click on it. It will add it into the Silver City equation. And then you can insert the income tax, whether it's personal income tax. There's, there's different types of personal income tax this model does not account for. It accounts for the primary personal income tax A. So this model is, is a good model, but it's not perfect yet. And currently using the model, by deleting, unchecking a lot of the tax exemptions and credits, they're able to get the grocery seats rate down to about three percent. That would be redistribution of all the other taxes that are actually available to the state to play with. One of the issues that I have a major concern with, and I did not hear any discussion about it at the meeting, was the goal with this model and many other models is to reach budget neutral. And they have yet to define what is exactly budget neutral. So their understanding of what our budget neutral would be, could be totally different from our understanding and our expectation. As well as, there's about seven, seven different tax restructuring models that are out there. You'll see Senator Scher's model is on the website. It's available for you to look at. And it's basically a two percent tax for everything. Two percent GRT, two percent income tax, two percent property tax. It's two percent. And obviously, there's, there's going to be some issues with that. There's going to be the question on personal income tax. Do you collect and pay the jurisdiction where the earner is working or living? And they haven't decided which is best. When you look at the property tax issue, if they were to tie that in to the national economic growth and inflation, well, the first year, you would have to go back and adjust everybody's property to true and correct, or it doesn't do any good to tie it to inflation at that point. At some point, you're going to have a tax lightening on several properties. So that would be a good way to fix it and just bear the political burden and go forward and get it over with. The problem with most of these fixes is really the political will of our state leaders to take that risk. Because any model you have, somebody's going to be negatively impacted and somebody's going to win greatly. So we're going to keep following this because I think at some point, these discussions end up as draft bills that go to the legislature. And after they spend a few years in the legislature, sometimes they, they get feet and next thing you know, they're running. So that is a very, very brief summary of those, that two-day meeting. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Any questions? Counselor Edison?
If I remember correctly, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Scher's bill has been, the two percent has been up twice, right? I know last year, and I thought the year before.
Well, it's, it's changed ownership because it actually was Representative Tom Taylor out of Farmingtonville. And then he retired. And now it's got the Scher name. So it's been floating around for many, many years.
But it's actually had a, sorry, it's actually had a number assigned to it for the past two years, if I remember, where it's actually, it didn't go far out of committee because there was a lot of questions about it. But I think he put it in for food for thought.
Absolutely. And we'll see it again.
And I know Greg's has voted one. And we have yet to hear from the Chair of Ways and Means, Representative Harper.
Harper is actually the Chair of this committee as well, the interim committee. And this model that I just discussed was, is being put together by Ryan Gleason, who is a Republican staffer in the legislature.
And I just wanted to mention that Tax Institute, that's run by Tim O'Neill, only one there, is actually the one that the New Mexico Municipal League contracts with to work on, looking at making it a three-legged stool, which is part of the packet. One of the first presentations in there. And that's been presented to the board, to the Municipal Tax Policy Committee several times, all that information, in addition to the joint meeting of the Municipal Tax Policy and County Tax Policy Committees. So Jim is well versed in taxes. He used to be Secretary of Tax and Rev. But he prefers trying to figure out what's the best way to somehow come to an understanding about what our taxes are, how they need to be fixed, and how to ensure that when we're talking about the state, we're not forgetting about municipalities and counties and making sure that they can provide the resources. The only other thing that concerns me is in some of them, is this revenue neutral pose, it doesn't consider the fact that in many cases, municipalities and counties in the state itself raise taxes in order to do economic development. And so if you're revenue neutral, one would think that how can we foster economic development without funds available? So it'll be interesting to find out if revenue neutral is only applied in municipalities and counties.
So Mayor, Counselor, I think the revenue neutral is obviously a huge question. Some impose the three-eighths of a percent tax very early. Did that change their revenue neutral? The Town of Silver City has not imposed that tax. Does that come back actually to take a double hit on Silver City because we were basically conservative? So the revenue neutral is a huge question.
Exactly, Mayor. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Marshall. The next item on the agenda, under New Business 11A, is the approval slash disapproval of two public celebration permit applications for Little Toad Creek's Oktoberfest Street Fair on Saturday, October 15, 2016, with alcohol service from 1:00 PM to 10:00 PM at 200 North Village Street, between Broadway and Yankee Streets. Liquor license, license holder information, one, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA Little Toad Creek Distillery, number 63004, HC 68, Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico. And two, Little Toad Creek LLC, DM, DBA Little Toad Creek Brewery, number 67021, HC 68, Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico. I believe Ms. Teresa Dalberdeen is going to make this presentation.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Counselors. Thank you for hearing this item. Little Toad Creek Brewery and Distillery is requesting approval of these public celebration permits for our annual Oktoberfest celebration. This will be our third year doing the celebration in October. It's a community fiesta that's open to all and free with music, live music, and games, and food celebrating the German, German heritage of Oktoberfest. So we actually, the music will be wrapping up around dark and we'll be moving inside for the final concert of the evening, which begins at 8:00. We've requested the permit to last till 10 o'clock, but we have time to safely transition alcohol service indoors, but will actually be done outdoors by dark. Do you have any questions?
Counselor Amen Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question. I have about three questions. First, is it beautiful at other locations in town other than Bullard Street for the Oktoberfest?
We, you know, we would be interested in Broadway. I'm not sure if that's a possibility. We haven't addressed that ever with the police department, but that's definitely another option.
I'm going to encourage you to start looking at other locations. A number of citizen concerns and small business concerns and festival fatigue concerns lead us to begin really looking much more closely at closing major streets. Now, I know that when the other brewery is open, that you will have space there. But I just really want to encourage that. I also want to really encourage two other things. And that is real conversation with the business neighbors. There have been a number of complaints in the past that they didn't know or weren't happy about how things went. And though your organization has always been pretty conscientious, some felt left out of the loop. And so I really want to encourage that. And the third thing is trash pickup. People walk down the street and dump things. So I just really, really would encourage that. If there are going to be events like this, that the sponsoring organization be really conscientious about leaving the space more beautiful than perhaps we need to get over. And I always do enjoy the beer and the men and leader losing. But let's think in the future about somewhere else to hold it.
Sounds good.
Any other questions? Counselor Connor?
Thank you. I have a concern about security. And that's just based on having attended the last public celebration that Little Toad was involved in. If you can make it more clear who's supposed to be wearing masks, if it's the under 21s or if it's the over 21s. And also, every single person, regardless of gray hair or whatever, should be carded, simply because at the last, the last event, that was not happening. And there were some people who, they weren't drinking, but they were definitely under 21, and it was kind of unsure which way it went. And also, one of the, the event openings was not being carded at all. So if you could just, you know, remind your staff that they got, they need to do that. Thanks.
Any other questions? Chief Reynolds, just a question. I know that you have a presence at the festivals. Do you or any of your, any of your police officers do any observing and monitoring of what you might pick up as a violation of age, you know, violation?
They do monitor the location. They do walkthroughs. They observe some type of violation. They'll like.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor?
Well, I like what you do. It is nice. The only reason I have wondered a couple of times to see you guys, I have only seen one issue and we discussed that. Other than that, there was water one time, but other than that, it was, it was nice. And also, maybe you should consider going to another place, even though people from downtown are used to it. But also, I agree with them also that maybe you should go around and ask the business people around there and saying, this is what we plan to do. Get their opinion. It always helps to get their opinion. And with that, I move to approve of two public celebration permit applications for Little Toad Creek's Oktoberfest, Oktoberfest Street Fair on Saturday, October 15, 2016, with alcohol service from 1:00 PM to 10:00 PM at 200 North Village Street, between Broadway and Yankee Street. Liquor license holder information, number one, Little Toad Creek LLC, doing business as Little Toad Creek Distillery, number 63004, HC 68, Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico. And number two, Little Toad Creek LLC, doing business as Little Toad Creek Brewery, number 67021, HC 68, Box 134, Silver City, New Mexico.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, a second motion is stated.
Thank you. Have a motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion? The all in favor of the motion as read, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. The next item on the agenda is 11B, the approval slash disapproval of Resolution Number 2016-24, a resolution of the Town of Silver City ratifying a certain agreement between the Town of Silver City and the Southwest New Mexico Council of Governments, dated September 27, 2016, and authorizing the execution of same by the proper official of the Town of Silver City. Mr. Marshall, you're presenting this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Counselor. This is the annual resolution authorizing us to retain the services of the Council of Governments for, I believe it's like $6,000 or something for the whole year. I think all of you will agree that their services are very, extremely valuable to the towns. And considering the relationship to the cost that we pay, it's amazing what they have provided to the town. Additionally, currently on the, the members is Alex as the primary, Peter Pena as the alternate, and he is also the Chair of the RTPO. And I believe Counselor Edison is the, the second alternate. And please include your appointments in, in the motion.
Any questions on this motion? On the motion, I think we should include those people. Okay. Do I hear a motion? Counselor Edison?
Yes, Mayor. I approve of Resolution Number 2016-24, a resolution of the Town of Silver City ratifying a certain agreement between the Town of Silver City and the Southwest New Mexico Council of Governments dated September 27, 2016, and authorizing the execution of same by the proper official of the Town of Silver City, with Alex C. Brown, Town Manager, as the voting member, Peter Pena, Public Works Director, as alternate one, and Counselor Cynthia Edison as alternate two.
Thank you. Is there a second? Counselor Amen Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A second motion is stated.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion as read?
It's a resolution. It's a resolution. Roll call.
Oh, yeah, that's right. We need a roll call. Ann, roll call, please.
Aye. Counselor Amen Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Connor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is 11C, the approval slash disapproval of Resolution Number 2016-25, a resolution authorizing the execution of a government obligation contract between the Town of Silver City and Tax Exempt Leasing Corporation. Mr. Marshall?
Mayor, Counselor, this is a lease purchase agreement for a street sweeper. And the current street sweeper that we have in service has reached its, pretty much its end of life. We've recently had to replace a motor in it. Thank you to Baird for loaning us theirs. The street sweeper was critical as well for the chip seal project. And if you remember, the last one took us some time to get the chips back up off the road because the street sweeper was broken. So this is a $46,000 annual payment for five years for the street sweeper. And... and that comes out of the water sewer fund, which is healthy at this point, can support.
Okay. Any questions? Do I hear a motion? Counselor Bedison?
Yes, Mayor, I move to approve resolution number twenty sixteen dash twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the execution of a government obligation contract between the Town of Silver City and Tax Exempt Leasing Corporation.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselwoman Smith?
Mr. Mayor, second motion is stated.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please, Ann.
Counselor Bedison?
Aye.
Counselor Amy Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Connor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I raise a question of privilege for a ten-minute short break.
Okay. A second?
I'll second.
Are there in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll take about a five-minute recess.
Ten minutes.
About ten-minute recess.
Aye.
Call a meeting back though, huh? The next item on the agenda is eleven D, the approval/disapproval of notice of intent number twelve fifty, and ordinance amending chapter six, section six dash one definitions, section six dash four, keeping of dogs and cats, section six dash fifty-four, penalty, section six dash one sixty-six, breeder permits, section two sixteen, license and permit required, section two seventeen, professional animal permits, and the land use and zoning code, Article three, section three point two, uses of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code. At least Counselor Bedison is sponsoring this item?
Along with Counselor Bedison.
And Counselor Ray is co-sponsoring it, right? So you will be presenting it? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. So, um, over the years that I've served in, on the town council, there's been concerns expressed from residents in all different districts about breeding and, and kennels, whether they be commercial or residential, in residential areas. And upon working with Mr. Scavron, we found that it wasn't even included in the land use codes where kennels and hobby breeders were permitted. So to alleviate some of the concerns regarding noise and other issues, along with Counselor Ray, we're bringing this forward, and it's an amendment to existing ordinances. In particular, this amendment will eliminate the category of residential kennel. It will no longer exist. It limits commercial kennels and hobby breeding to four land use zones, commercial light, commercial highway, rural, and industrial. Please note, it does not include commercial historic district. We just felt that the noise would be too great, given the, the way the buildings are and the narrowness of the streets. It increases annual permits, which have been nominal at, at best for the two categories. Commercial kennels would be four hundred dollars annual permit. Breeder permits would be an annual two hundred dollars permit. And anyone that's currently in the, has a residential kennel license or has a commercial kennel or hobby breeding permit in residential land use zones other than the four mentioned, will, especially the person, anyone running a residential kennel, since that won't exist anymore, that category, they have a period of not more than six months to conform to the amended ordinance once it's been signed by the mayor and voted upon by the council. So I want to be really clear that what this does is it moves breeding and kennel, and commercial kennel outside of residential areas to rural zones, industrial zones, that can best handle a, a large number of dogs. And it will, I think, certainly benefit the health, safety, and welfare of the community as, you noted from one person who spoke to it this evening. I have yet to hear anything negative about this, only positive, that people like the fact that this would happen in residential areas and only be restricted to the four zones. Once again, there'll be a period of six months once, it's not when the N O I passes, it's when the ordinance passes, so there'll be several week period for people to comment on this, if it passes here today. But I would just say that they'll have six months to make sure that whatever litters they have, whatever, everything has been taken care of, and then they can then show to the animal control officer that where they're going to have a commercial kennel or a hobby breeding permit, that it will be in one of the four zones mentioned. And the land use code has been updated to include both commercial kennels and hobby breeding, and the fact that the only place that there would be permitted would be commercial light, commercial highway, rural, and industrial zones. Counselor Ray, do you have any comments?
Not in historical.
Not in historical, right. And, and I do, do want to mention, along with Counselor, Counselor Ray saying this, it's not in the historic district, not a commercial historic, and we felt that an increase in annual permit fees was warranted because they were so low prior to this, and if folks are running commercial kennels and folks are running hobby breeding, they should be able to, to afford those annual permitting fees that will be obtained by going to the Town of Silver City, down to the ACO, showing all the, all the information that's outlined in the amended ordinance, and go through the process of doing that annually around January one. It says January one, but we, no, not everything's necessarily open on January one, but it's an annual, not prorated fee for the permit.
Does the council have any questions? Counselor Bedison or Counselor Ray? Counselor Amy Smith?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just have a couple. I've, I've read this a couple of times, I just didn't get it all. Is there a space limit? Is there a requirement for a certain size if you have like a commercial kennel? You know, so, so space for dog or anything like that?
I can't be, maybe the full ordinance, Counselor Amy Smith, but remember, this is a, 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 I saw that, so I'm sure that certain things are detailed in there.
In there, I'd have to go look it up.
Right. For this, remember, it's just an amendment, it's not a complete rewrite of, of the animal ordinance right now.
I confess I didn't go look it up, so.
And, and I confess I can't give you that answer, but maybe Counselor Scavron?
For the hobby breeder or commercial kennel must be located on at least one acre.
Okay.
And another point that might be discussed is the, if you're a commercial breeder or hobby breeder or commercial kennel, there's the ordinances regarding the abuse of animals and the care of animals is not overridden. Those care, adequate care responsibilities and prohibited practices apply to the keeping of a dog, whether you're doing it commercially or in your home.
Thank you. That answers my question.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion? Counselor Bedison?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve notice of intent ordinance twelve fifty, and ordinance amending chapter six, section six dash one definitions, section six dash four, keeping of dogs and cats, section six dash five four, penalty, section six dash one sixty-six, breeder permits, section two-one-six, license and permit required, section two-one-seven, professional animal permits, and the land use and zoning code, Article three, section three point two, uses of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code.
Have a motion. Is there a second? Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll second that as written.
Any discussion?
Yes.
I'm in favor of this motion. One of the greatest number of complaints I received as mayor is about dog issues. So thank you for bringing that forth. All, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is item eleven E, the approval/disapproval of notice of intent number twelve fifty-one, and ordinance amending section twelve dash seven dash nine through twelve dash seven dash nine point nine, off-highway motor vehicles, definitions et cetera, of the New Mexico Uniform Traffic Code adopted as the Silver City Traffic Ordinance in chapter fifty, section fifty dash one of the Municipal Code of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico. I believe Counselor Ray is the sponsor of this notice of intent. Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. As we all know, I have been trying to get this on record to see if we, if it can be allowed. I understand that there's a lot of issues out there, and there is. Is there a lot of safety issues out there? Yes, there is. And this ordinance that I am proposing on a notice of intent, could it be a, a, the opportunity for some people? It could be. It could very well be. One of the things is that this N O I's being proposed is only a notice of intent, is if it passes through, if we open up the language for the town council to, to see if they can, or we, or we can tone it down or add some things to it. If this first procedure passes by, we will bring it back, allow bring it back, no less than thirty days and no more than forty-five days. It will be up to the council to say yea or nay, to open up, like, like I said, to open up the discussions for, for this thing right here. An issue, and I'll go down with an issue. The public, some public will like it, some people won't like it. And one of the things I want to do is that I am not going to propose A T Vs. I'm not. It's going to be the U T Vs, and the U T Vs are the ones that have a steering column, which is a lot safer than the handlebars. A U T V, they have rubber tires. It can be up to the individual to see if they want to put street tires. They also have seatbelts, which, which an A T V does not. Stay long allows that you can drive a A T V or a U T V on any road that is not unpaved on the side, only on the side where there's dirt. Only if you are going from one place to another place. Like I live there on Cooper Street, if I want to put gas, I can go across the highway, as long as it's in a straight line and come back in a straight line. And I've done that many, many times. Stay long allows that. The county does not have any language on A T Vs or U T Vs. They don't. From what I understand, if you want to drive an A T V or a U T V, you can go on the road, on the, on the side. In other words, this is my understanding, if you want to go from, say, for instance, from Cooper Street all the way to Tyro, you can go, as long as it's not on the highway. That's why I would like to propose only the A T Vs. I mean, I'm sorry, I, I take that back, the U T Vs, thank you, thank you. An A T V, I mean, a U T V, they are side by side, and like I mentioned, they have seatbelts, they're safety, they have road bars, and they also have on the side for the passengers to where it, it'd be quite impossible or not impossible, quite hard to, to get up. They have to be registered. They have to be registered. You have to have insurance on that. If, if this thing was to do, to pass by, we as a town council can put our rules to it. And when it is ruled, it will be, I believe, will be a lot safer. This is why, this is what my proposal here. The Town of Silver City to allow only U T Vs side by side and no A T Vs. No person under the age of eighteen allowed to operate a U T V or side by side. Helmet of a D O T rating for all passengers. Eye protection for the driver. All occupants must be secured by seatbelt while on city streets, if it passes, or even on the highway. You are not allowed to have anything on the freeway or a very busy street or highway. It must be properly licensed to operate U T Vs and side by side, and you must show proof of insurance. You have to have mirrors, both the left and right side, your A T Vs and your T Vs, and the A T Vs have a, have a bright light. The side by sides, they have two lights, one on the left and one on the right. All vehicles, A T Vs and U T Vs, they have stoplights, two of them, one on each side, and it can be seen from a quite bit of a distance. You can, you have to have turn signals, of course, stay long, so that if you, if you pass, you can use the hands. Speed, speed limit. Okay, in Silver City, the fastest you can go is thirty-five. It goes anywhere from fifteen to thirty-five. I still propose not to use A T Vs, I take that back, U T Vs on Hudson Street. We don't need to go on Hudson Street, we don't. But if you want to go, it's a very busy intersection. We can always go across and use the side street. Three-wheelers, I've been mentioning, I've been mentioning, what? Three-wheelers. They don't make three-wheelers, although some people have had them for years and years. This N O I that I'm proposing, I would like to see, I would like to see if it would be for a year's time, and then come back and review it after a year's time. I don't know what else to say, except it, it's up to the town council to either say yea or nay. And again, this is only an N O I that would open up the language to see if I missed something or if somebody can bring up something else for safety wise or more public comment. And we're at home.
Okay. Does the council have any questions? Counselor Ray? Counselor Bedison?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few questions. I understand that the U T V manufacturer, you know, how to use U T Vs states specifically it's not prepared highway, uh, roads or streets, because it's a utility vehicle rather than a street vehicle, at least by their definition. So I'm concerned, and maybe Counselor Scavron can address the liability for the town if this would be to go forward where we are in direct conflict with the manufacturer's stated use. stated use, and that someone could say, like if something happened and there was an accident of any sort, that they could sue the town because the town stated that it was okay, whereas the manufacturer said, no, it's not.
Mrs. Scavron, can you respond?
Well, that's an interesting argument, because when, if you look at this draft ordinance, first of all, let me back up a second.
Okay.
The town has adopted the UTO, Uniform Traffic Ordinance, prepared, I guess, by the municipal league, which is a compilation of the most relevant portions of the state traffic law. And it allows municipalities to adopt this Uniform Traffic Ordinance as its own traffic code, so we have done that. In that, we have adopted, in the municipal code, we've adopted the UTO as our ordinance. Within that ordinance, it has a definition, and it's, and the definition of recreational off-road vehicle has the word exclusively in there. So, it's a vehicle designed exclusively for off-road use. In the, in this proposed, in this NOI, we dropped the word exclusively out of there, so now it just says it's, we could say it's primarily designed for off-road. The logic argument might be, well, if it's designed for use off-road where you got bouncing around and you got stumps to jump over and uneven road, how much safer would it be on a flat road under controlled circumstances? And would the manufacturer be presumed to know that in many jurisdictions, these UTVs and ATVs are being operated on the streets? So, the issue continuing on then, the reason that they put exclusively in there is to protect themselves, so that theoretically, if somebody is driving a UTV on a street, not off-road, and something happens, it flips or does something, and the owner of the vehicle decides that I'm going to sue the manufacturer, because when I took this turn at twenty miles an hour, it rolled. And then the manufacturer would be, would respond and say, hey, we designed this thing not for use on city streets. We didn't anticipate that you'd be making ninety-degree corner turns. We imagined that you'd be out in the woods where you could take a more gentle turn. That would be the argument. Now, you say that if the town allows the use of these vehicles, that the manufacturers telling you are not, not designed to be used on streets, is that a prohibition? And are we being negligent by saying, hey, here's something that shouldn't be used, but we're saying you can? And I don't see any, I don't see any case law that settles that issue right now. There's been so many jurisdictions that have adopted it, and you would imagine that the associations who are writing their literature now are talking about this particular aspect, hey, by the way, if any municipality, if you allow this to be used on your street, maybe it voids a warranty, and maybe you're aiding and abetting the, the violating of a warranty. Maybe you're being negligent in permitting a vehicle that specifically is designed for off-road, and you're allowing it on the streets. And that kind of a case is going to be very fact-driven. On the civil side of it, we're not really concerned. On the tort side of it, do we have a liability of permitting the operation of something that the manufacturer said was not designed for? It doesn't say was, it shouldn't be used. It says we didn't design it for that. We're not saying that it would be dangerous to use, but our principles of design were anticipating it be used in this particular fashion off-road. That doesn't mean that it's not suitable to be used on the highway. Now, one of the things that during, if the NOI just passed, and we have a thirty days or forty-five days to do further research and for the community to discuss it, one of the things that should be done during that period is for the town to contact its risk management and ask, would we be covered in a lawsuit alleging that we were negligent in permitting these off-road vehicles within the town? And I'm sure that they're up on it, because Farmington has an ordinance, there's other towns that have ordinances permitting UTVs. And they must have cleared it with their insurance companies, they would not go forward on an issue like this without determining whether there would be potential liability to the town. So, that's one of the things that I would recommend, is that we do contact our risk management, see what their experience is, and then rely on that, because they're the ones that would be defending it.
Thank you. And also...
I have more questions.
Counselor Bedison?
In the same vein, UTVs, the information about these specifically states that anyone sitting, like in the back or sitting where, you know, the other seat is for the, for, not for the person who's driving, but for another occupant, that they have to be able to have their back up against the back of the seat and be able to have enough length in their arms to be able to hold on to the, to the safety bar that's in there. And that would be another point of concern, as we talk about safety at seatbelts, they do provide seatbelts, but they're specifically stating that about children being in the vehicle, in the UTV, that they have to be a sufficient height to be able, in length of arm, to be able to safely ride in that UTV.
Well, the issue you're bringing up was not in the state legislation as a requirement, and it was not in the original UTO. But, but, there's enough wiggle room in the state legislation that allows a municipality to add other conditions for the operation of the vehicle. Now, for instance, in the state law, it says only the driver needs to have a seatbelt. And when we discussed that, it says, well, what about the person sitting next to you and the two kids in the back? Why should only the driver be protected? So, it was, and that's the way they wrote the law. So, going through what the state required, Counselor Ray added as many safety concerns as he could identify, and I'm sure he's open to other safety concerns, as they're brought up during this, if the NOI passes, you'll be looking for more, other than liability issues, you'll also be looking for, how can we make it safe? How can we integrate it into the community? For instance, you might consider lowering the decibel level from ninety-six to whatever it is for an automobile. There's a whole bunch, that's what Counselor Ray would like to do, is open this, open the forum up for discussion.
The UTVs, they're not loud. It's, the UTVs and ATVs, they're not loud. It's the ones that they call quads. Those are loud. And the quads are like, the quads aren't performed on an ATV or a UTV, except it's only one passenger, and they go very, very fast, and they use those out in the forest, they use them in the sand, in the sand dunes, and they're very loud. Those things, those things, no, no. And again, with this ordinance, we are allowed to say, okay, if it's going to pass, this is what we want to do. Now, there's a lot of people in town that are already anticipating it, and they are already doing work to their, to their UTVs. We have the right to say, okay, the tires, we can put street tires on there. The tires that are on there right now, manufacturing tires, they're very soft, and they will not last, they will not last at all. Now, if you put street tires, yes. These tires that they have on right now for, in the forest or on the road, they're knobby, and they have a very low pressure. So, it is, it is up to the town council to put in what we think is necessary. One thing that I forgot to mention also is that no pets are going to be allowed on the UTVs. Go ahead.
So, Mr. Mayor, I still have a few other concerns, because during the discussion and the presentation, Counselor Ray said that UTVs have two taillights, right? But it's, right now, it only says that as, at the minimum, it has to have one. And I've received people commenting about that issue, and also the fact that it says only one headlight, I mean, at a minimum. So, I understand that this is an opportunity for us to, you know, that if the NOI passes, for people to adjust it and to continue to work on it. I just want to bring up a few other concerns. Intersection of one eighty and ninety is very crowded and very difficult. There's been a number of accidents there, and, you know, we have big trucks turning there. It's not necessarily an intersection. I think you mentioned making sure that people don't use on Hudson, currently that's not in what's been presented on the NOI. And I know there's room for growth if we pass it to the NOI stage. I just think people need to understand that just because it might be passed the NOI does not mean that this is the ordinance, as just current, as with the one we just did. I am concerned, and I'll just state that the majority of residents that have contacted me, whether it's email or stopping me or whatever, are, I mean, I've only had three people say yes, and the majority is no, because they're concerned that people will not understand the distinction, it increases the amount of work for our officers, because they're going to have to be out there patrolling to make sure it's not nice if we do all these things. It has all the things on it, it's not an ATV, it is, you know, that we have a driver with a driver's license, you said eighteen. I think that, I think the question I would like to ask of our chief is how much more work does this put on our officers who are already dealing with people not understanding that a stop sign means stop, that a red light means stop, and that pedestrians and sidewalks have to right away? So, is that's okay, Mr. Mayor?
Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. I'll just be very blunt. The law enforcement department, clearly, and the officers are against this. We feel that it is going to add additional work to our load that's pretty high as it is, simply by enforcement. You also may have a conflict with other state statutes pertaining child enforcement So, if this does pass, we're going to have to dig into what are the conflicts? We do have a part of the calls for service that we handle. This will add additional calls for service from the police. As stated during the public input, we obviously have not been doing a great job in doing enforcement on the police in the first place. We have to prioritize our calls for service on this. This won't add additional burden to the department for enforcement. If nothing else, there also needs to be inspection of these vehicles prior to, if this passes, and I hope it doesn't, I'll be very blunt, if this passes, there may be a segment of inspection as well by the police department incorporated into this. There's some issues that can pop up with these type of vehicles. You have parents who may want to take their kids on a place, but they don't have appropriate avenues to secure them with all these UTVs. They may create additional injuries, they're getting an accident just like a motorcycle. There's going to be additional injuries in this. There's an airbag system. If they hit the roadside, they're probably going to have a death. Those vehicles operated on highway, and I've already had a conversation with people, that one person lives in Santa Clara, wants to ride all the way into Silver Gordo, but that's going on a major highway. So, again, if this does pass, there needs to be very strict regulations of this.
One of the benefits I see, you're raising for the town, is that there are places for the police department, there are places for law enforcement, there are places for, there might be places for the law enforcement, the fire department, and AMTs might not be able to go in the vehicle. And with a UTV, you can. That's one of the benefits that I see. And I see your point, right? I do see your point. And also, you know, as long as I do, and we all know, that a lot of people, the bike people, they never stop. They never stop. And this, this, these are going to be bigger vehicles, so they have to stop. Will they do it? And I'm sure they will. If you're going to get something, I go to it? Yes, it's like anything else. You get people in motorcycles that don't stop, you get people in cars, trucks, that don't stop. Now, it's either our fault or your fault. It's just the way people do things. That's why I would like to see if it passes, let's try it for a year's time, and if it doesn't pass in a year's time, then it doesn't. I'm trying to sell this, this NOI.
And I understand, my question, the fact that this has come forward, I'm just stating my position on it, we do use UTVs on occasion for special operations. We have access to those through the Grand Canyon Sheriff's Office, and we've even reached out to the county to borrow theirs. So, we have those on occasion. It may come to the point where we may have to purchase them for off-road, such as our outline areas that doesn't have residential, that we have additional problems because now these vehicles locate to go on a roadway. So, there will be adjustments if this does pass. It's just going to add an extra burden to the police department as well as town of Silver City at cost.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Counselor Bedison?
I'm finished, thank you.
Okay. Any other? Counselor Allen?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a couple of questions and then I have comments. My question, one of the questions is, currently, where is it legal? You explained the thing about if you have a point A to point B, you can ride on the side of the road, but where is it legal for off-road vehicles to drive around Silver City right now?
Chief Riddle?
Chief Riddle?
Uh, thank you. Currently, no UTV, UTV, or three-wheeler can be operated on any street within this jurisdiction. They can travel down the side of the road, as long as they're not on the paved portion of the roadway. They can do, as Counselor Ray said, take a straight angle across the roadway to get to another corner.
So, people are driving from, or would like to drive from a part of town, maybe to get to a trail? Are there trails surrounding Silver City that are appropriate for off-road vehicles that are currently appropriate and illegal for off-road city, for off-road vehicles?
I appreciate that question, as a matter of fact, I forgot to mention that earlier. One of the comments that came up is that the operation of an ATV, UTV, or three-wheeler on private property, that individual has to have permission of that property order to operate them. Currently, we really don't have areas within the town jurisdiction that allow that. There's a lot of private property owners, east of town, east side of town, also up on Ursa Minor, Ursa Major, that's private property. And people have to have permission to operate those vehicles on that property in the first place. We have very few areas that are town property, as a matter of fact. Town property is an area designated not for use by those, by the city management.
Right. So, currently, Boston Hill and the San Jacinto Trail area is not okay, although the definition of this notice of intent includes any dirt trails as well as paved trails in the town. So, would that... So would that be interpreted perhaps to be opened up?
According to NOI, correct.
It looks like it would be, yeah. So currently, I know that town side farms is off of Little Walnut. Are there any other agricultural farming areas where the folks might be wanting to be using their UTVs within the limits of the town of Silver City?
We do have some little sections that are privately owned, such as on South Mountain View, that are bigger properties that the individuals may use that on their property.
But that's not currently agricultural use or, maybe, that we're aware of. Because I understand that recently, the state law 270 that established this statute change was intended for farmers who might be on an ATV and need to travel on a paved road to get to their fields down the road without being cited. That was Senator Neville who sponsored that. Now, he said, "But we don't want to penalize people for carrying out their jobs and duties." So I do know that there are, are there people in town who are currently driving on town roads, carrying out their jobs and duties?
I'm unaware of any. Additionally, and I might add too, that any agricultural equipment has the ability to operate on any roadway as long as it's going for the purpose of farming or ranch. As an example, we have ranchers who have trailers that are specifically for livestock transportation and not required to be registered under the state law.
Okay, but there are provisions for that.
Correct.
And reading the state statute and also information from the State Transportation Commission, I learned something I didn't know, which was that a governmental entity can already drive utility vehicles on paved roads. So your force actually could be driving on paved roads as well as, I believe, the university would have to, to keep that. So that's already been authorized.
Western does have utility vehicles that operate on College West and 12th Street that area. Our Parks Department also has utility vehicles.
And that's according to what I read, perfectly acceptable.
Correct.
Okay. Good. You know, Governor Martinez signed that bill. This was a quote on her remarks, and this was the bill that gave local entities the authority to determine whether or not they would allow off-road vehicles. She said, "I believe that the use of these vehicles on paved roads should only be permitted in limited circumstances. In most cases and in most roads, they should not be allowed. In some cases and for some purposes, it makes sense and can contribute to a way of life in certain communities." But I want to be clear that the intent of this bill is not to replace or substitute vehicle usage for day-to-day transportation. Local governments should use this authority sparingly and only after careful consideration of their community's needs and the risks associated with off-highway vehicle use." So it seems to me that if we don't have a whole lot of agricultural use, ranching use and stuff like that, we are actually encouraging the use of utility vehicles for regular transportation. Did you get that sense, Chief? Thank you. Just curious.
Any other questions? Councillor Conna?
I have to say, my district is the district that's lit right now. I've gotten about 50/50 comments, but I just wanted to take the chief's, his input because I think that's something we really needed to hear. Thank you.
Chief, thank you.
Mrs. Cabron is signaling you may.
Mrs. Cabron?
Yes. This is in a response to some comments made by Councillor Eamon Smith. Yes, in the Uniform Traffic Ordinance and in the state law, it allows UTVs to be driven by the Park Service and Minerals Natural Resources. When I rewrote this section that had to do with UTVs, I eliminated that exemption. Now, this is an issue of whether the state can dictate what kind of vehicles can drive on your city streets. This is another contest between the state central government and the municipality's right to regulate its own streets. So there's an issue, and I did take a position. According to the UTO, it says that none of the city's laws can apply to any of the state vehicles. Well, we apply the laws to state-driven vehicles all the time. If you're in a state-driven vehicle and it says that you can go 70 miles an hour whenever you want to, right through Silver City, and we've got a sign posted that says 30 miles an hour, the idea that we can't ticket them for speeding is analogous to this argument that we cannot regulate state use of any kind of vehicle that wants to on our streets. So there is a, I have taken a position, and we'll have to discuss it further if you'd like, but I am not conceding that the regulation of city streets is subject to the whims of the state.
Councillor Conna? Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Yes, sir. I move to approve our Notice of Intent, number 1251, and Ordinance Amending Section 12-7-9 through 12-7-9.9, Off-Highway Motor Vehicle Definition, etc., of a New Mexico Uniform Traffic Code adopted as a Silver City Traffic Ordinance in Chapter 50, Section 50-1, as a New Mexico Code of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion as stated.
Motion and a second. Anne, I would like a roll call on this.
Further discussion?
Huh?
Further discussion?
Oh, yeah, further discussion. Sorry about that, yeah.
I just like to state it, I second that motion so that it can, as Councillor Ray said, we can continue to discuss this and spend the next 30 to 45 days hearing from the public about it.
Okay. Councillor Bedesen?
I think it's appropriate to discuss it. I just want to state that I have concern that we could amend this to death and still not get to what we want, and with the expressed concern of the chief and of the police department. So I do think that the democratic process should go forth for the next 30 to 45 days, but I just want to state that I have reservations. I'm not sure that we'll be able to come to a compromise, but it doesn't mean we shouldn't try.
Any other discussion? Councillor Eamon Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too really encourage community discussion. I want to say that I've had 28 comments to me so far, rabidly fearful and opposed, three saying that they would like the idea. So for my district, there's been a large outpour to me of people extremely concerned. I've already had ATV riders going up and down my street, and I've observed people on 180 riding their vehicles. I think that there is a perception out there that somehow this is already okay, and I'm very concerned about a variety of issues: noise, speeding, danger, disrespect of private property, and disrespect of our city streets. The person who's been riding up and down my street, Councillor O'Connell, is to make gestures and yell at me when I've asked him to slow down and get off. You know, there are two idioms in English. One idiom says, you know, to open a can of worms, which means to attempt to solve one problem or do something good, but a bunch of other problems then come out that weren't there in the first place. And there's another English idiom, which is to open Pandora's box, which means that you perform an action that seems small or innocent, but turns out to have serious detrimental and far-reaching negative consequences. And I have some concerns that moving this forward is opening Pandora's box of worms.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Councillor Ray?
Remember, I am not proposing ATVs, I'm proposing UTVs. There's a big difference there. Even though they're four-wheelers, there's a big difference there. UTVs are safer, they have a steering column. ATVs are being utilized right now on the streets, they're illegal. Let's do something about that. I'm not proposing ATVs, UTVs. There is room to discuss this. And I thank you, because it was very interesting, the public is not educated. I've had a couple of meetings and they are not educated. They all think that it's dangerous. Anything is dangerous, anything that you do, even walking is dangerous. So with that, I thank you guys. It was interesting, and I hope that, I hope it'll pass. If not, well then, we try. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
No, sir.
I've thought about this issue a great deal, and I've studied it a great deal, and at this point, I am, I have many, many concerns. I have to respect the chief's take on how this will affect our community. I have to think about the liability involved. You can't legislate yourself out of liability when it comes to the courts today. I have a big concern about safety. You know, before, before airbags in collisions, the chief cause of death was the steering wheel plowing into your chest and tearing up everything in your chest. And we have a hard vehicle here, you know, and we can amend it, we can make lots and lots of, lots and lots of amendments that on paper sound good. We can have all these rules and regulations on paper that sound good, but my concern is we can't enforce or seem to enforce the ordinances we have on the books already. The noise ordinance, the cellphone ordinance, as we just saw from the data that was given to us earlier. So that's just my personal take on it. Of course, it's not up to me to vote, I'm just giving my opinion. And at this point, I'd like to, I'd like to turn it over to Anne for a roll call. Can we do that now? Okay.
Councillor Conna?
Aye.
Councillor Ray?
Aye.
Councillor Eamon Smith?
Nay.
Councillor Bedesen?
Nay.
We have a tie vote.
Okay, you heard my concerns, but let me also tell you that I think the town council is sort of the ultimate example of the democratic process, where people have input, a chance to consider all the different viewpoints and study them out, and then come to some conclusion. And I don't want to stop this discussion, I want it to go on. And so I'm going to vote in the affirmative, with the understanding that you know how I feel, should it come to another tie vote. The amendments and all the little safety things, don't sway me, I think that's just, that don't solve the problem. So I vote in the affirmative. Motion carries? Okay. The next item on the agenda is 11E, 11F, I guess. Is that right? 11F, Approval Disapproval of Notice of Intent, number 1252, in ordinance to approve a long-term lease for the management of the Silver City Municipal Golf Course, also known as Scott Memorial Park Golf Course, under the provisions of Chapter 48, Section 42-24 of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code. Mr. Marshall, I believe you have this one too.
Mayor and Council, if you have before you is a 10-year lease to the golf course through Western New Mexico University, it's based on the Silver Fairways lease that the town is historically under different programs. In that lease, you'll notice that the town will continue to provide the effluent and the electric for the pumping of the effluent to water the ground. And in doing that, there is also protection in there to protect our permit for our district of effluents. Western New Mexico University will maintain and operate the clubhouse, the pro shop, and maintain all the other ancillary structures, and those are a whole, a nice appearance. The, there is a short-term lease in place that runs through November. In Exhibit A, you'll see the description, the property description, and it also provided you the map, it's a picture of the golf course that was done with a drone and pieced together digitally, and then on top of that is the overlay of where they're at right now with the survey. So you can, it's not a panel survey, but I wanted to give you, since this was before you right now, an idea of exactly what we're looking at. With the, we'll be paying, they'll be paying us for operating the new facility, and we will pay them something. We're going to, it comes out at zero. The asset list is a cat, the components that's out there, the majority of them, the more parts, et cetera. During the rate schedule that is a cat, the WNMUs, well, if you notice in the rate schedule, the student fees and electric employees are greatly reduced rates in different categories, and that's because Western is dedicating some of their activities fees to compensate. And any other questions?
Any questions? Councillor Bedesen?
Just a quick one. I think I remember reading, I'm not sure what section, it said that it's to be operated as a golf course. I guess I'm wondering about other uses of that. I mean, is it open to the public for walking now as a public? You can't answer it, can you?
I.
Is it open for them to walk on, you know, the cart pathways?
So in the, in the agreement, it states that the course will be maintained for the purpose of golf.
Right.
And open to the public for the purposes of golf.
Okay.
I, they would have the power to regulate safety, and I'm not sure that is the best place to be walking down the path if you're not participating in the flow of a golf game without possibly becoming addicted.
I agree. I'm just concerned that there might be additional uses that may be put to, and there may be a discussion to remind the folks who are managing a golf course through Western, for Western, you know, for us, that, that, you know, we have to be concerned about safety if we've got the cross-country team out there running.
Absolutely.
When golfers are active on the golf course. Just a few, just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page about... Just a few, just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page about for golfing purposes.
The intent is for golf, they do have not only the right, but the responsibility to provide a safe environment for any of the occupants and ensure the safety.
Okay. Did Mr. Scavron want to say something?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other, any other questions? Counselor Raymond Smith?
I promise this will be quick. So is the golf course, the top of the clubhouse, and the facilities that Western will be maintaining? So they would be free to host parties and events there for like their alumni and stuff, right?
I agree.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
I think I have a motion.
Counsel, Counselor Ray?
I, okay.
Y'all decide.
I move to approve a Notice of Intent, ordinance number one two five two, an ordinance to approve a long-term lease for the management of the Silver City Municipal Golf Course, also known as Scott Memorial Golf Course, under the provisions of Chapter Forty-eight, six and forty-eight dash twenty-four of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code.
Is there a second?
Mr. May, I have a second.
Have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion carries? The next item on the agenda is eleven H, approval/disapproval to change the regular council meeting scheduled for Tuesday, November the eighth, two thousand?
Run G, sir. Run G, aye.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Approval/disapproval of requests for proposal number sixteen slash seventeen dash one P, Legal Services. Okay, here we go. Mr. Marshall, you're doing this one.
Mayor and council, the town issued, as our current legal contract had expired, and the town issued an RFP for legal services. There was three proposals received. The review committee that reviewed the proposals and accorded them, which you have at your, for your viewing. And at this time, it is staff recommendation to award the proposal for RFP number sixteen slash seventeen and P, Legal Services, to Robert L. Scavron, and authorize the town manager to negotiate the contract.
Okay. Is there a motion? Oh, any questions or missed a motion? Is there a motion? Counselor Beadison?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve proposal number sixteen slash seventeen dash one P, Legal Services, per staff recommendation to Robert L. Scavron, and giving authority to the town manager to negotiate the contract.
Mr. Mayor?
Second?
I have a second and a motion carries.
Counselor Raymond Smith? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Next item on the agenda is eleven H, the approval/disapproval to change the regular council meeting scheduled for Tuesday, November the eighth, two thousand sixteen, to Wednesday, November the ninth, two thousand sixteen. The reason this change is necessary is because the county clerk's office requires this room on November the eighth for the general election. Any questions or comments?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Raymond Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve to change the regular council meeting, currently scheduled for Tuesday, November eighth, two thousand sixteen, to Wednesday, November ninth, two thousand sixteen, at the same time at six p.m.
Have a motion?
In the same place.
Second? Counselor Beadison?
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion carries? This concludes the business of the Town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Counselor Raymond Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, a second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.